Started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Daryl Sandinlin is the pastor at the Rock Assembly of God. He's going to lead us in the invocation right there. And afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAteer if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Lord Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to receive your invitation to come boldly before the throne of grace today to ask for that that we have need of. We pray, Lord, for wisdom and guidance in all that is said and done here today. We pray, Lord, that you would continue to lead and guide these who give their time as they lead and guide us in our city. Pray your blessing upon them, Lord, as they give their time and their efforts. Let it be returned upon them threefold in blessing. Let your presence be felt in this room today. In all that's said and done, in your name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Haste to flying, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, February is Allied Arts Month, and we have several of our community leaders to come forward today and help us celebrate. Why don't everybody come up? So we have Camelia and David, Anne, Walt, Debra, Terry, come on up. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up front.
Whereas the arts enhance every aspect of life in Oklahoma City, contributing to economic development efforts, enriching our quality of life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on the development of our youth. Whereas youth arts education helps to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills, while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of artistic endeavors and cross-cultural understanding. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry has a $314.8 million impact on our state's economy, supports the full-time equivalent of more than 10,000 jobs, and generates more than $29 million in state and local government revenues. Allied Arts has served as the champion of Central Oklahoma's cultural community and infused more than $60 million to enhance our city's quality of life since 1971. Whereas the month of February has been recognized as Allied Arts Month by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City, local businesses, and nonprofits, and the community at large for more than 45 years. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2017 as Allied Arts Month in Oklahoma City, and he calls upon citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our community, and to especially encourage greater participation in the arts by all citizens.
Let's hear it for the arts in Central Oklahoma. Debra Center is the executive director of Allied Arts. I'm going to give her the microphone, let her talk about everything, or her staffer.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Mick. We are certainly appreciative for the opportunity to be with you and council today. We do have a big job ahead of us. Fundraising's been difficult, but we are encouraged, and we feel like with the support of the entire community, that we can certainly make and surpass the goal of $3 million. One of the ways we do that is through workplaces. So we go and visit workplaces all over the city to help us achieve that goal. And Mayor Mick, do you know the most outstanding workplace that we had last year? Do you know what it was?
You mean who's number one?
Who's number one in Allied Arts workplaces?
The city.
City of Oklahoma City. So we applaud you. And we have support from council on our board, and so I appreciate Representative Councilman Stone Cypher and Councilman Meg Salyer, as well as City Manager Couch that help us so much in all of our efforts. And we have board members here today, the wonderful Allied Arts staff, who always like to bring you guys some kind of surprise. So they're going to pass that out real quick for us, and I'm going to let Anne Clor say just a couple of words as well.
And Mr. Mayor, we especially want to thank you for the beautiful words you gave during the State of the City. It was great for the arts community to hear your passion for the arts, and we appreciate your great appeal. So thank you so much for doing that. Jeanette and Rand Elliott are honorary chairmen this year. They could not be with us today, but I do want everyone to know who our great honorary chairs are. And we have a lot of donors in the audience, and a lot of future donors. So we want to thank all of you for considering a donation this year to the Allied Arts campaign.
Thank you. And, you know, it's not known by everyone that Allied Arts doesn't just support the symphony and the ballet and those traditional professionals down at the civic center and places. They also do a number of educational programs inside our schools. There are a lot of people out there that may not be able to afford the special lessons that they're capable of doing, but they just don't have access to the right teachers. And Allied Arts fills that gap. So you're not just helping the professionals in the arts, you're also helping a kid who just needs an opportunity to express themselves through music or other forms of artistic behavior. So please give to the Allied Arts. February is Allied Arts Month, and this applause is for you guys. Thank you very much. Thanks for your attendance. Thank you. All right, I'll ask April Stafford to come up. Each month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us choose one teacher in the metro area as our Teacher of the Month. You can imagine, we've got a lot of schools and a lot of teachers, and it's hard to select one. But we have selected April Stafford as this month's Teacher of the Month. She comes to us from the Western Heights Public School District. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up front.
Whereas April Stafford has been named Teacher of the Month for February by Western Heights Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. April is a proud graduate of Oklahoma State University. April has been teaching for five years, all at Winds West Elementary, beginning with fourth grade, then moving on to the alternative elementary school in October of 2016. Whereas April serves as a lead teacher for the Winds West Professional Teaching Community, working with other educators on ways to increase student achievement, and foster relationships, and encourage a lifetime of learning and creativity. Whereas April also serves on the Winds West Behavior Intervention Team, which is a support resource for teachers with students who need extra support in the classroom. April appreciates this opportunity to give encouragement to students she might not otherwise encounter during the school year. April credits her teaching career to her mother, who was a pre-K assistant for many years. April was inspired by the fulfillment her mother received from teaching. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend April Stafford on her selection as February 2017 Teacher of the Month by Western Heights Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, this is where the suspense starts, because we actually need to vote on this. We need a motion. Is there a second? We need some green lights up here. Cast your votes. Ah, it's unanimous. How about that? Let's hear it for April.
Well, thanks for voting. That makes me feel good. I just have to say that this year has really been interesting, moving from fourth grade to be the alternative elementary school teacher for all of Western Heights. And I just thank my school, and thank my mom and dad for coming today with me, and for this great opportunity. Thank you.
Give all your kids a hug from us. Thank you very much, April. Let's show our round of applause again for April. And I'll ask Brock Bennett to come up. The Oklahoma City Quanis Club helps us select one employee of the citizens of the city of Oklahoma City. Over 4,000 employees there, so again, it's not easy to select one, but Brock has been selected by his peers and his subriors, and he's in water quality. And let's have a, let's hear the resolution as we get settled.
Whereas Brock Bennett has been a city employee for four years and is a water operations supervisor for the Water Quality Division of the Utilities Department. Whereas Brock supervises day-to-day operations, facility and equipment operations, and ensures the safe treatment of water. Brock is a very hard-working employee who is passionate about making high-quality, great-tasting water for Oklahoma City residents. Whereas Brock Bennett is very knowledgeable of all aspects of water treatment, always willing to help others by offering his assistance and expertise, and strives to make the treatment plant a great place to work. Whereas Brock reacted quickly and calmly when an employee had a medical emergency in August of 2016, ensuring that the employee was safe until an ambulance arrived. Whereas Brock remained calm under pressure and managed the situation with poise, proving his dedication to his coworkers' well-being. Whereas this council desires to recognize Brock Bennett for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Brock Bennett, February 2017, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
And again, we're going to need a motion and a second, vote on this resolution. All right, cast your votes. All right. You did it. Congratulations. Let's hear it for Brock. You know, all cities are concerned about the quantity of water and the quality of their water. And some cities can figure out one of the two, some cities can't figure out either one of them. But at Oklahoma City, thanks largely to a commitment by the generation that came before us, we have an abundance of water and some of the highest-quality water in the country. And Brock's one of those guys that's keeping an eye on the quality side. So Brock, thank you for your work.
Yep, I appreciate it. Think, I want to thank whoever nominated me for the thing, just doing, just doing my job, making sure somebody was in a hard time, make sure they were safe. And I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to have this, to be Employee of the Month. I really do appreciate it.
You bet. Let's show our appreciation to Brock. All right, thank you. Item 3C is the appointment of James Shulon to the Traffic and Transportation Commission. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for January 31st and February 7th, and four B is to approve the journal for January 17th. Comment your questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Just a couple this morning, starting on page 18, under item 9D1. Item A, 501 Brookwood, we ask that that be stricken, the owner secured. Item M, 2624 Southwest 71st Street, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to page 19, under 9E1, B 501 Brookwood Drive, we ask that that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item Q, 2624 Southwest 71st Street, we ask that be stricken, the owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances?
Mayor, there is a request on the agenda to continue a matter on the, under item nine. I'm not going to oppose the request, but since I won't be here, I want to make a comment on that item. To approve that item will be, would make a dramatic change in our policy with regard to...
Let's pull the background off.
Okay, it's the Mustang de-annexation question. And to approve that item, I'll use more, I'll, let me, but it's, it's an, it's an effort by the city of Mustang to increase their size, to bring about some more residential housing, commercial, whatever, in that, in the area that they're doing. And it's an area we don't serve with, with services. But by way of historical background, Oklahoma City has protected its environs against the siphoning off of our ability to collect sales tax, which is our only source of revenue, for a number of years. And it, and this is an example of going backward on that policy. I think that, obviously, there are good arguments that can be made to do it, but I think the better overall argument is, so long as we don't have a system that permits us to collect sales tax, or collect revenues from sources other than sales tax, we don't have any business providing retail outlets or growth outlets to our, to the neighbors that support us. I think we can be cooperative with them. Right now, the conversation is that we don't serve them. Well, we do serve them. The city of Mustang buys water from us. For years, the city of Mustang has, had their sewage treated by us. We, we, the Mustang's trash is, is dumped, is, is put in an Oklahoma City landfill, I believe. So it's not a question of whether we serve them or not. It's a, it's a question of who gets the sales tax revenue if, in fact, water and sewer is, we de-annex them. I, I won't be here to vote on it, but I will tell you that if I was here, I'd vote against it and speak very vociferously against it, because it is such a dramatic policy change that it should not be done, in my opinion, by just the annexation or de-annexation of a single parcel of land. It ought to be done in conjunction with the Planning Commission, with conjunction with our planning department, to determine what's in our long-term best interest. I'll pass the collection plate one more time.
All right. And that item, again, will be back on the council agenda on April 11th. Item six is the first of our revocable permits. Item 6A is a request to hold the McNellies St. Patrick's Day Block Party. And of course, that'll be near 10th and Walker, or 11th and Walker. Do we have anyone representing that event or organization today? Now, come on up. Brian, is that you?
That is me, yes.
We will need your name and address for the record.
It's Brian Pittman. It's 2740 Northwest 21st, Oklahoma City.
How many years you been doing this?
This is going to be our ninth year now. So I can say, see everybody again, new face over here. Everybody but Meg, our own ward council's not here today, so that's good. But yeah, this is our ninth year doing this operation. We opened in, actually, 2008, and we started the year after that, stuff, of doing the St. Patrick's Day event, basically on Northwest Walker. We're just north of 10th Street, which is right next to where our public house is located at. We're pressing to get, to be able to close down the street again for our St. Patrick's Day party. It's on a Friday this year. We're very excited about that. This is the first time we actually have ever had it on a Friday, because of the leap years and stuff, so we're very excited to see what the outcome will be, and how many people will show up. Always weather permitted, no matter what, of course, so we're hoping for sunshine and nice warm weather, hopefully like Saturday was. It'd be great. We're going to have plenty of tents and stuff outside also, during the street areas, and we're going to have a lot of, plenty of green, lots of food, a lot of fun, definitely going to have a few booze outside also, in regards to beer and stuff. We just wish for you guys' ability to actually close down the street for that revocable permit.
All right, block party on St. Patrick's Day at McNellies. We'll need a motion.
Move the item.
Second? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
You bet. Tell Elliot we wish him well.
I definitely will.
Okay. Item 6B is a request for the Oklahoma Hall of Fame to hold the Oklahoma Hall of Fame Land Run, and the event would be March 25th. Let's see, Gabby? Yeah, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What can you tell us about this event?
So I'm part of the team board, which is part of the museum also. So we're holding our sixth annual Oklahoma Land Run, which will run on Northwest 13th and Chertel. And so pretty much the benefits of this will go to the museum and its educational programs, kind of like their scholarships that they also offer for high school seniors. Our run will run also through the Heritage Hills Historical Neighborhood.
How long is the run?
It's, we have three runs, pretty much. So our one-mile run starts at eight o'clock, and our 5K and 10K start at 8:30. So it pretty much lasts until the last person goes through, but it should take until 11:00, give or take.
All right.
Yeah.
How about a motion?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, and item 6C is a request to hold the Red Bud Classic. Yeah, come on up. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Patty Anthony, 1708 Bedford Drive.
All right. Tell us about the Red Bud Classic.
The Red Bud Classic, we're celebrating our 35th anniversary this year, so we're the longest run in Oklahoma, and actually, we're the longest run in the southwest United States, which is something we're really proud of. It's a two-day event, April 8th and 9th. On April 8th, we have the cycling tours that leave the Waterford Complex at 63rd and Penn and go out to Jones and Choctaw. We have a 10, 33, and 50-mile bike tour. On Sunday, we have a 5 and 10K timed runs and a two-mile walk. And those start at the Waterford Complex also, and go north into Nichols Hills, and then to Nichols Hills Plaza. This year, our beneficiary is Kleats for Kids. We're partnering with them to help provide athletic equipment to kids in need in the public schools in Oklahoma City. So anyway, we'll, hopefully, you all will approve our event on April 8th and 9th.
All right. It's in Ward 2 and Ward 7. You want to make a second, John?
Second.
All right, all in favor, cast your votes. All right, it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all you all do. All right, we'll assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are seven items on the agenda. Sir?
Sir.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the MFA. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority with five items listed. Is there a motion on the PPA?
PPA, second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items.
This is issues of debt. It's to do some minor improvements to the shop up on North Portland. It's to do a small refunding on part of the debt, the existing debt, but most of it is for the, by the new recycling carts.
Move approval.
All right. Any comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. Is there a motion?
Move the item.
All right. Any individual considerations?
Yes, please.
Uh-huh.
Your Honor, I'd like to discuss items 7E6 and item 7AG.
All right, Mark, why don't you jump in on E6?
Sure. E6 is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing on March 14th, and this involves the applicant Lifetime Fitness. And I wanted to comment on this. About a year ago, I was conducting some business in Dallas and was invited to work out at a Lifetime Fitness facility, and was just really impressed with their operations. They have over 118 fitness centers across the United States, most of them open 24 hours a day. But the unique thing about it is that they have not only indoor, but outdoor facilities. And this is kind of unique, and I wanted to mention it, in that it will take over the old Macy's space at Quell Springs Mall, and it will have outdoor tennis, and swimming, and other outdoor activities. And so I want all our fitness centers to succeed, and I want people to work out more in Oklahoma City. But I'm kind of excited about this one, because it's going to hopefully bring more sales tax revenue to Quell Springs Mall.
Absolutely. Good reuse. Anybody else? Oh, you wanted to speak on AG too, didn't you?
Yeah, just briefly. AG is a, is a water improvement district application by Clifford Farm Subdivision. And these improvement districts that come out of Title 11, they're by statute in Oklahoma, is when a community wants to improve something in their district sooner than the city can get around to doing because of expenditure issues. And, and so it's where the community assesses itself. It's not ask what your city can do for you, but what you can do for your community. And, and this community wants to improve their water quality, and so they are assessing themselves with a water line. And I just want to remind communities that not everybody can use this, but this is a tool that can be used to improve your community, and it's an important tool.
Yeah, there are, you know, neighborhoods out there that are not on the city water supply, but would like to be, and sometimes this is a solution for them. Sometimes there is no practical solution, but if it works, we'd love to partner with you. And sometimes it's a, it's an issue of not that the city can't, won't do it, it's the city can't do it, that upgrading private streets and things like that.
Exactly.
It can get complicated. All right, anybody else want to comment on anything on the consent docket before we vote? All right, any comments from anybody else? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, item eight is the concurrence docket. Is there a motion here?
Move the item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions before we vote? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Brings us on to item nine. These are items that require a second vote. Item 9A and B were both deferred earlier in the meeting. Oh, you're right. A has not been deferred. Item 9A is a de-annex with Oklahoma City and dealing with the city of Yukon.
Actually, it's an annexation. Yukon previously, we previously de-annexed some property to Yukon for Park Facility, with the understanding that they wouldn't do retail in there, and now they've chosen to do some retail in there. And so in terms of the agreement, they're going to let us, they'll de-annex and let us re-annex it back. But I do see their city manager, Jim Crosby, is in the back of the audience this morning.
All right, so previously de-annexed, now annexing.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion on 9A?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B, one and two have both been deferred until April 11th. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9C? All right, how about a motion?
Cast it.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9D? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding the removal of properties from the abandoned building list. We have two properties listed. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on either of those items? All right, how about a motion on 9F?
Move the item.
Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9G is an economic development agreement with Hartford at 10th, which is an LLC. This is an issue that's in Ward 1, and Brent's going to give us a preliminary.
Good morning. For more than six months, the city's been working with a, with the developers of the Lantana Apartments to develop a redevelopment framework where we could get the properties back up and running. A little history, the Lantana Apartments were built in the 1970s. They had about 184 units. They closed in 2008, and since that time, the city's had over 100 or more calls regarding issues with that, with the site. These calls resulted in about $300,000 worth of liens for police services, fire services, securing the facilities, junk and debris removal, tall grass, and the latest one that we worked on last year was the demolition of some of the buildings. In order for the developer to obtain financing to rehabilitate the remaining 102 units, the developer requested the city release the liens that we had on the property. We were able to, in working with the developer and their financial institution, we were able to enter an agreement, which is before you today, in which we were, the city were to release the liens if they provided a payment of about $180,500. And then the balance of those liens, we'd convert to a second mortgage on the property. That way, the, they can get financing for the property. They're required to bring a million and a half dollars to the project, and they'll provide, we expect them to get financing of about $1.6 million for a total of $3.1 million project. On the second mortgage, if they do not complete the project by September 1 of 2018, that mortgage, they will be required to start making payments on the mortgage at that time. I would like to recognize Wiley Williams. He worked really diligent on this. He worked really diligent on this. This was not an easy task for him, and we had to work with multiple attorneys, but we're able to get it done, and I appreciate that. Justin Timbone is here, who's the developer, and we're happy to answer any questions.
What is the timetable brand again on their improvements?
We anticipate them to start construction in March next month.
James? I mean, overall, I think this is a good deal for the city and for Hartford. Main thing I wanted to do was just thank Brent and Wiley and Justin for all the work they've done. Justin's been very persistent, and everybody's done a lot of work, and I think that this deal is actually a better deal for both parties than what we were originally, than what we were originally thinking it was going to be. It was, this is a much simpler and less complicated structure, and I think just the fact if we get $180,000 upfront is probably more than what we thought we were going to get when we demolished the buildings in the first place. And I think the whole demolition cost about $240. Is that right?
Correct.
So, we're getting a good chunk of that back, and we're hopefully going to get a redeveloped 102 units out of the original 185. After all the demolition, there's 102 units left, so the whole complex has to be redeveloped by September 1st, is that right?
Of 2018.
So, yeah, that's a, I think it's a great deal.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment on the innovative nature of what's happened here. I don't know whether we've done this before or we know of anybody else that's done this. But this is, this, I think, points out what's good about Oklahoma City. The idea that we'd take something and that James has put the pressure on doing something about the dilapidated apartment, to move from a dilapidated apartment, that complex that was burning and creating all kinds of problems, to a forward-looking project like this is pretty miraculous, I think. I think it says a lot about what goes on in Oklahoma City, and Wiley, Brett, everybody that works on projects like this. I think we're just very fortunate and blessed to have staff that can see something at the end of the tunnel besides a pile of rubble, and that, and when this started, this is what that looked like. It looked like the best hope was just to push it all down and let somebody else worry about the rubble, but this has turned out to be a real, real achievement, I think, and it could perhaps be a model for situations that we have. I think many of us in our wards have situations similar. Probably, nobody has one quite as egregious as the Lantana was, but we all have them. And to see this happen the way this happened, it's a milestone, and James is to be commended for being the guy, first guy to start pushing the button on moving it forward.
And I think, I think also too is that the ultimate goal is to, for the city to not, to figure out a way to where a property like this doesn't get to this point. And I think that with the whole vacant abandoned building program that we're trying to push and trying to get the state legislature on board with us too, is, I think that's really the ultimate goal, because, I mean, this was a really hopeless property, and hopefully we can, hopefully this deal works.
All right, how about a motion?
I'd move for approval.
All right. We're voting on Item 9G. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, Item 9H is a resolution that would establish some new parking rates and a new concept out at the airport for parking.
Mark Cranenberg is here to talk to us this morning about premium parking.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Good morning, everyone. Mark Cranenberg, Airport's Department. I'm happy to be with you this morning. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust, and it is an adjustment of some of our parking rates out at Will Rogers World Airport, but it also is to introduce a new parking product, which is a premium parking product. The slide that you see on your screen, if you look at the photo insert, this is the area that we're going to put the premium parking. It's in the lower level of the two-story parking garage, which is the closest parking to the airport terminal. You can see a few spaces here. We have some openings in the wall there, and you can see across the transportation plaza to the terminal building. This is just another diagram to orient you to all the parking that we have available at the airport, all of the garages and surface lots and our cell phone waiting areas. I just want to highlight the pink area, which again illustrates the two-level garage. The upper level is still going to be used as short-term parking, that will not change, and it's the lower level that will be creating the new premium space. So, how did we get to this point? If you recall, that space was primarily used for the rental car companies as ready-return spaces for many, many years, and when we built the new rental car facility, all of those ready-return spaces moved out to the new facility. So, we were able to go under a study with our parking consultant, and we also looked at various options to bring what type of product would be best for the public, and we determined that a premium parking product would be better suited. And because the area was closest to the terminal, it made sense. However, before the garage could be reopened, the garage needed to have some significant refurbishment, and we've been underway with that for some time. So, for the last few months, we've been doing some work by Meridian Contracting. We've been replacing all of the control and expansion joints on the upper-level deck as water was penetrating down through the deck onto the lower level. We also had to replace some walls and also do some joint sealing on those walls and control joints, and it was due to moisture intrusion when the walls became stained and unsightly, and so, we've had to deal with that, as well as we had to deal with some spalling of concrete from the deck too that could cause chips to fall down, and we don't want that happen on cars. Meridian is still doing some work. They're not completely finished yet, but after they do finish, then airport staff will move in. We'll do a complete power washing of all the garage lower level. We're going to do significant painting of all the columns and the beams. We'll be restriping the lower level for the new product as well as resigning, and that will be in accordance with the new sign policy that was approved by the trust sometime. So, our tentative opening date will be the end of March of 2017. So, this is the top view of the lower level. You can see you're penetrating now down below the deck, and I just want to take you through the diagram. Notice, we still have Station 2, which is the elevators, that is the first station that you exit the terminal when you go down into the pedestrian tunnel that comes up into this location, so it's easy access to the pedestrian tunnel. And there are also seven ADA accessible spaces, which are purposely positioned around the Station 2 for convenience for ADA. If you look at the top-left corner of the screen, that's the northwest corner of the parking garage. This is the entrance that the rental car companies used for many, many years. We've kept that entrance, so this is how customers will enter the lot. And then, if you look at the blue strip that's on the bottom, which is the south portion of the garage, the south wall, we're starting off with 31 spaces, which will be used to be able to have passengers be able to reserve those spots online, and I'll cover that in just a little bit. You'll see two gold squares that are within that blue strip. Those represent pay-on-foot kiosks. The airport is underway with a $4 million project to update its parking and revenue control system. Some of the amenities that we have will be some pay-on-foot kiosks. We'll have some in the tunnel. We'll have a couple in the terminal building is what we're planning, as well as a couple in this location. So, when that project is finished within the next year, you'll be able to use the pay-on-foot kiosk to pay for your parking. And then, I want to call your attention to the two pink rectangle areas that are almost in the center of the blue strip. Those are going to be reserved for electrical cars, and they will be equipped with charging stations so that people can reserve those spaces and bring their electric cars to the airport and have them charged while they're on a trip. If you look to the right of the screen, we have two green drives that exit the area. The first one is to the top right, which is the northeast corner, and this is an area where once you get back from your trip, say you're gone five days, you take your parking ticket and you go to the toll plaza and you pay just like normal. Once we get the parking and revenue control system up, you'll be able to use the southeast corner of that building, and you'll be able to take your validation ticket, put it in the equipment, and then, that's a free exit where you bypass the toll booth and you go right on Terminal Drive outbound, and you exit the building. So, the benefits are garage parking. It's the closest possible parking to the terminal. You're able to use the tunnel, or you can walk the crosswalks directly across the plaza into the terminal building. We'll have new wayfinding and signage, wider parking spaces. We're going to have 10-foot spaces, and we'll be able to do online reservations. So, we're working with our parking management contractor, which is ABM. They do parking at numerous airports across the country. This is an example of a page that we'll have on our website, flyokc.com, and you'll be able to put reservation dates in, and for a $5 fee, you'll be able to reserve one of those 31 spots. My anticipation is this is going to be a bit of a demand, and we may probably increase that to the other spots in the premium parking area. So, customers will pay once they return, and you only pay for the days that you're actually parked there. So, pricing, how did we determine our Garage A premium product? We looked at products all across the country for premium parking, and it really does vary, and it depends a lot on the infrastructure that the airport has. Typically, it's two to two-and-a-half times the value of your highest parking product, which our garage is $9, so we're settling on $18. Excuse me. Now, if you want to park short-term in the premium lot, you can do that. It's ideally designed to be long-term parking, but you can park there for three hours, $4 per hour, and then, it goes to the $18 rate. We have two other products that we're amending. The five-story garages and the surface lots, we're establishing also short-term rates for three hours before it goes to the daily rate in those lots and garages, and then, we're establishing an overflow rate, excuse me, an overflow lot of $4 per day. We haven't had that before. Excuse me. And I'm out, my voice is gone, so I'm ready to answer any questions. Thank you. Apologize. Appreciate your support.
You bet. Help me with the procedure. Has the airport trust already seen this?
Yes, they, the trust approved this joint resolution. That's February meeting.
Okay, and so, now it comes to us?
Yes, we're validating the policy for the rate, and then, once the project is done and the garage is ready, which we hope will be the end of March, then we'll do a press release and institute the program.
All right. Comments or questions for Mark? Uh-huh, yeah, David?
Mark, any thoughts about taking this a step further? Some airports now provide valet parking. Any thoughts along those lines?
We looked at valet parking, and one of the things that we look at is valet has to work logistically, and it's very hard for us to come up with a program. We actually looked at this area for valet, but there's no really quick way to get the cars back to the customer.
Can I ask you a quick question? The lighted pedestrian crossings that you have, how logistically difficult is it to put those in, and how expensive is it?
The what crossings, I'm sorry?
Do you have lighting in the?
Yes, oh, yes, in the ground transportation plaza. We did this this past year. It really was pretty easy. We got the product, we paid for it through a vendor, after getting three quotes, and then, my staff installed the product.
Is it expensive, or?
No, it's really not. I don't recall what the numbers were, but it wasn't too bad.
But you have power there?
We had power there, yeah, we had to have power there.
Oh, okay, okay.
But my staff did that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion? All right, voting on Item 9H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Mark. Item 9I is our collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police for the 1617 calendar year. Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Item 9J has to do with the pay plans for non-represented pay plan employers.
Non-represented pay plan employees are those that are not in ASME but do similar level tasks, but they are generally in the finance and personnel area that deal with personnel matters, and this reflects the terms of what's in the ASME contract, but no pay increase outside of steps.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on Item 9J. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And Item 9K is a similar issue that has to do with the city auditors and the municipal councilors' departments.
Yeah, and the management pay plan, and same thing, there's no pay increase, but it reaffirms the continuation of the sickle program and our tuition reimbursement program and the new insurance rates.
All right, cast your votes. And 9K passed unanimously. Item 9L is a companion item to the solid waste issue that we approved earlier. Is there a motion here? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9M, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9N, I understand we do not need executive session?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion here? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9O, I understand we do not need executive session?
Correct.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9P, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion there to move that item to executive session? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9Q is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any items listed under 9Q? All right, how about a motion to deny the claims? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there a motion here? Anyone here hoping to speak on those items? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. Mark, you have anything for us today?
Briefly, I have a couple of items, Your Honor. Number one, I want to invite everyone to come out 2:00 PM on February 28th at 2017 for the First Maps 3 Senior Health and Wellness Center. The ribbon cutting, like I said, is at 2:00 PM. There's an open house and tours from 2:30 to 6:00 PM. I got a chance to tour the facility about a week ago, and it is magnificent, and I hope a lot of people come out and not only look at it, but decide to use it. It has a physical fitness component and a mental wellness component, and I think it'll be good for our citizens. And then, secondly, I want to talk a minute. We discussed an economic development agreement today on the Lantana Apartments, and the one thing that's always been curious to me is how do these economic development agreements work out? Are they successful? Are they good for the city? And if you didn't read the paper on Saturday, or, excuse me, Friday, on the business page, it says, and I quote, "Paycom strong earnings since stock soaring." Paycom was the seventh largest gainer on the New York Stock Exchange on Thursday, and we have done three economic development agreements with Paycom for infrastructure and expanding their operations, and Paycom reported in this article that they have now opened their third building on their campus, and there are up to 2,075 employees. So, I wanted to congratulate the employees and management of Paycom, and this looks like an area where an economic development agreement really helped. The other thing, just briefly, there has been some concern about the widening at 150th Street near MacArthur Boulevard, and the concern was whether there could be a turn lane to help benefit some of the people trying to get in and out of the neighborhoods, and engineering has determined that that third turn lane will be available and will help promote better access to the neighborhoods, and so, I wanted to let our citizens know about that. But more importantly, this week, it's been reported that there's a scam going on in northwest Oklahoma City, and it's students posing as athletes trying to buy candy and then get inside the homes of people and take things while they distract the homeowners. So, I want all the, it's been principally around northwest 122nd and MacArthur, and so, I wanted to warn people. We want our students to go out and be able to fundraise, but make sure you're dealing with a legitimate person.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Mark, can I ask you a question, or if anybody knows? Do you know if the Wellness Center will have aquatic therapy where somebody? That somebody will teach people or lead exercise in the pool?
They will, and. Yes.
I wish physicians could know about that. I just think the referrals, they could flood that place because it's hard to find good aquatic therapy, and it's so good for seniors.
The pool has an incredible facility for walk-in, for people that need to walk into the pool. It also has handicap facilities for people that are handicapped. I think you'll be, I hope you come. I think you'll be quite impressed.
Thanks.
I'm all on that same note. I've got a lot of questions about how to actually get a membership to that, and a lot of people go to our website, and so, I've requested that there's an easier link to healthy living, and I don't know if that's happened yet, but there's a lot of people that are kind of confused on how to sign up, so.
It's a good idea.
If we can make that easier for people, that would be good.
What is the cost?
It fluctuates based upon income. I think you did the exact dollar amount, but I've got it back in my office.
The most is $30 a month, though, if I remember right. And then, $50 per couple, I think, is the maximum.
And that would include all the aquatic therapy classes?
All right, John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, lost one of my neighborhood presidents, Mr. Sherman. What was so interesting about Mr. Sherman, he cared about our city. He was, was retired. He was, was retired firefighter, was heavily involved in the Black Firefighters Association. From his hospital bed, he wrote me a note that said, "Thank you for fighting for Ward 7. Thank you for keeping your promises toward 7." Who would have thought that a few days after he sent that note to me, he would have passed? So my prayers go out to his family. And also my prayers go out to State Representative George Young, who lost his wife on last Friday of council. She was very active in Ward 7 and she will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And David?
In this morning's business section, I think it's the business section, there is an article about UCO creating a new STEM program on its campus. And I would like to see if we could maybe call together the heads of the other colleges and universities in the Oklahoma City area. You know, OU's represented here, OSU at OKC, Oklahoma City University, Oklahoma Christian University, OCCC, to see if we could get those schools to come together and see if some kind of similar type of activity could be put together at the new innovation district. And then, you know, just put a greater emphasis on mathematics and science and with the hope of somehow being able to teach college classes, hopefully both undergraduate and graduate, and then somehow encourage students who are participating in that, the college students, to go out into the Oklahoma City public schools and share all that information they're gaining. You know, in general, most schools don't have the ability to attract teachers with great, you know, science and math backgrounds. And I think when you pull together those colleges, you get some pretty impressive people and to share that information out to the Oklahoma City Public Schools system, not saying that the arts aren't important, they are, you know, but really see if we could use that innovation district as a means to help create interest in science and math, especially among young people, and somehow get it back out into the school system. So I think it'd be great from an economic development activity. You know, we have General Electric's oil and gas worldwide research center over there. A lot of biotech research is going on in that area, and if we could just somehow supplement the science and math area, I think it'd really be helpful to the city. Thank you.
All right, Pete?
I don't have anything other than the introduction, this ordinance that I've requested.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and bring it up?
It's actually just a cleanup of what we've done in the past. The background pretty well illustrates where we've come from having weekly meetings. We've for a while had bi-weekly meetings in the summer, then it's been expanded. This just makes that permanent, so we don't have to go through the process every quarter or every six months to re-up the idea. It's just being introduced today, but it would, I think it requires a motion to do that, and I'd move that we go ahead with the introduction.
Okay, any comments or questions on item 11A? All right, cast your votes. That item is introduced and we'll move forward. When will, okay, so the public hearing is set for February 28th and then final adoption scheduled for March 14th?
Right, it's the next two meetings it'll be.
Anything else on the?
The only thing I did, we did have a meeting this week with citizens that live southeast 29th Street and east of Douglas, along that strip to extend water and sewer, similar to the method we talked about in Word 8. It's a little more extensive, it's a couple of miles. It was, it's been generated by some problems out there, but the biggest problem has been that an old industrial site that's north of 29th Street in Midwest City that treated, that cleaned oxygen tanks in a contract with the military years back, used a solvent, put it in, and put the solvent in a lagoon when they were finished, and that lagoon is now, the plume, the water plume from that lagoon is now seeping southward into the water system. And there's at least one large employer there that's now on bottled water to wash cars with because they can't, they can't use the water for any purpose, it's so heavily poisoned. So it hasn't spread more dramatically than that, but that's pretty significant to that. So that's, then we looked at it and there's some other people want to bring retail and all kinds of commercial along 29th Street, South Side 29th Street can be a very, very attractive place, I think, for commercialization. I don't know how it's going to go, but we had the first meeting.
All right, Eric?
Just thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things real quickly. One, if citizens live in wards 1, 3, 4, and 7, today's an election day, I'd like to encourage them to get out, participate, make their voice heard. And I'd like to have you, extend my thanks, Jim, to your staff for participating in a very spirited meeting last night. It was supposed to deal with the general obligation bonds, but it also touched on a number of sore subjects with our citizenry about the condition of roads. And if you're concerned about the condition of roads and you do not understand how general obligation bonds tie in with solving that, my encouragement would be to find a workshop and attend the workshop and become knowledgeable, because that's the vehicle that will be in all probability used to extend the improvement of our roads that we need so much around Oklahoma City. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Ed?
Just maybe one more follow-up word on the flu, because it keeps getting worse. We had another five people die in Tulsa just last week from the flu. And I don't know if there's a way, Jim, to send a reminder to our 4,300 employees, but getting the flu vaccine is really an example of how we're stronger together than the sum of our parts because of something called herd immunity. And there's no judgment, I went a lot of years, I didn't get a vaccine, but when you get a vaccine, you protect not just yourself, but all the other people you come in contact with, including immunocompromised people, pregnant women, et cetera. People, so you're protecting, you're getting a vaccine not just for yourself, but you're protecting many other people that you come in contact with, and so.
That's probably a really good idea, we can send a memo out to employees.
Thank you. All right, James?
On the subject of streets, I've been in a lot of neighborhoods over the last few weeks, and one thing that I've just anecdotally noticed, when I'm in a neighborhood that's, that was developed in the 50s, 60s, or 70s, who have concrete streets, they don't really have any street problems. When I'm in a, when I'm in a neighborhood that's similar in when they were developed and they're, they have asphalt streets, they do have problems. And so one of the things, I would just like to probably have a conversation either with Jim or Eric about what are the, what would be the ramifications and if it's even possible to require develop, change the standards basically of neighborhood streets to requiring concrete? Because I feel like with all of these, these new developments that are going in, that, you know, they put down an asphalt street and it's nice and smooth, but in 20 years, it won't be. Whereas the concrete streets will hold up, you know, and I bring up in Ward 1, Riverbend. Riverbend has nice concrete streets and I don't think that those things will ever have hardly any maintenance that needs to be done to them. And, but, but then you go to another, I mean, you go to another development that has asphalt streets and I think that you, I think that we will have to have some serious maintenance within 20 years. So I would just like to look at that issue and see what the ramifications of it is and how much more expensive that would cost home developers to do that.
Your timing is good, because we are reviewing the subdivision regs.
Okay.
Now we'll be taking some changes to that in the next several months.
Okay.
So that'd be, the timing would be good. It's more expensive, it's quite simple than that.
Yeah, but I mean, I know, I know.
And we've planned the cost analysis on it and such, but we'd be happy to revisit that item.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Just a final note, Terry and I went to the memorial service for Dr. Zudy last night over at the History Center. And for those who don't know, Dr. Zudy was a pioneer heart surgeon, but also a scientist. And someone did the math, some researcher who said that the techniques he invented, created, that were later adopted, and there's a, there's a lot of sophistication to the issue, but, but the techniques that he created for the industry and, and to a certain extent invented for himself have now affected 86 million people around the world. And that's, that's, it's hard to imagine, but, I mean, he really was an incredible scientist who loved Oklahoma City and one of the people who spoke at the memorial service, you know, went back and said in the 1980s, there was a St. Louis effort to get him to move. And he said he was not going to leave Oklahoma City. And, you know, we all know the 1980s were a time when a lot of people did. And I'm sure he was, he was tempted financially, but had some loyalty for his adopted state. He was born in Lebanon in 1925 and so, by coming here and then making a huge impact in our community, I think we should all remember him this week as he's laid to rest.
Just one more example of how difficult it would be to operate without immigrants in this country.
Well put. All right, city manager reports?
We have several this morning. We've got, I think, about four presentations. We're going to start with Mike Carrier, who's going to give us his quarterly update on CBB.
Thank you, Mr. Couch, Councilman, Mayor. Good to see you all again. Second quarter was a good quarter for us. We continue to see some good things happening in the travel and tourism industry here in Oklahoma City. And so we'll go to the slideshow. In convention sales, we are doing extremely well this fiscal year. Our first, our second quarter results, 307,000 room nights, up 39% over last year. That is future business. And I will tell you, as we, as we watch this, we have what is called a, the TAP report, and the TAP report tells us where we are relative to prior years, and we are considerably ahead and extending out even further. So 307,000 in our pipeline. Then as we go to the future room nights, we're at 40% of our, 47% of our goal for definite rooms. That has changed obviously since the end of the quarter, and I will tell you that we are continuing to see very good results. We are considerably ahead of last year at the end of the month of January. So we'll bring you some information on that at the end of our third quarter. In our tourism, one area that we are seeing a little bit of a challenge right now is in our motor coach business. We have booked more groups, 261 versus 236, about 11% increase, but as we move forward and look at the room nights that has produced, I think you will see that we are down just slightly, about 5%. We are looking at spring hopefully being better. We do have some very nice exhibitions coming on. Obviously, things like the Prix de West that will be held at the Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum, the Western Heritage Awards coming up at the beginning of second quarter, or third quarter, rather, fourth quarter, I'll get it right here in a minute. They're in April, and so we, we think that we will catch back up there, so not feeling too bad about that. In terms of our equine sales, we continue to see great repeat business from the horse show industry. We already are at 80% of our goal, which is about normal for us this time of year because of when these things get booked relative to the immediate, immediately following the existing shows. We, we got great reviews from all of the equine associations. They are very, very pleased. The new executive for the Quarter Horse Association, he's their executive vice president, Craig Huffeins, the new commissioner of the National Raining Horse Association, both of those folks and their associations are very pleased with what they're seeing here and looking forward to continued growth at the, at the fairgrounds. Quarter Horse is very pleased to see the Bennett Building open, be able to do their major trade show this coming year when they have the world show. So, you know, we feel very good about where we are in the, in the equine world and what's happening here. In terms of marketing and communications, obviously, social media has changed the way we do business. It is considerably more used by travelers from all over the world booking, but, but what we're seeing is more and more use of smart devices when people are in the community. There are a lot of research programs out there that help us identify how people are using smart devices, what they're doing, and how it relates to the marketing that we do in terms of them actually showing up in Oklahoma City. And sometime I will, in the near future, I will, I'll come to you and explain to you a couple of these programs that really look like Big Brother, because they can tell you when these people got online the very first time and checked out Oklahoma City and everything they've done right on through their trip here. But you can see that our website visit's up, pitched stories, these are travel bloggers, travel writers that we work with. A very good quarter. There was just a piece in, in a public, a digital publication called Afar that had the four cities that you must travel to this year, Oklahoma City being one, along with Telluride, Colorado, and Baltimore, and I don't remember what the fourth one was, but we were one of the four. You know, and so we continue to get great reaction from bloggers and from people that come here to visit. So we, we have seen a decline in our hotel bed tax, not nearly as significant as we've seen in some of the other tax receipts from the city. Anecdotally, in the last couple of weeks, we have seen what we think is beginning to be a reversal in that from several of our hotels. And a good bit of that seems to be related to the oil and gas industry as people are beginning to look forward, as we see more rigs being, being put in play, that some of these companies, some of the service providers across the board are beginning to hold meetings, corporate meetings, to begin to ramp up for what's going to happen over the next year to two years. And obviously, that's a nice impact on our hotel tax collections. So we will continue to watch that. We are, right now, it appears that we are on pace at least to do as well as we did two years ago, which was still a good, a good year, so. But we will continue to watch that and as we continue to see more things coming in. I would remind you about some things that are happening this spring. Councilman Green was commenting a few minutes ago, make sure that you put the 23rd, 24th, and 25th of March on your calendar. First Robotics, their 10th anniversary, and I know you'll hear more about that from them, but you'll see 50 or 60 teams from across Oklahoma and even some surrounding states that will be here for the regional competition at the Cox Center. The 102nd edition of the, the US largest all-youth livestock show will be held, the Youth Expo will be held in a few weeks out at the fairgrounds. So come to that. The Women's Regional Basketball Tournament, the NCAA Regional Finals, one of the regional, four regionals will be held here. The Big 12 Women's Championships will be held here. So a lot of things of that nature, a lot more activity going on out at the softball stadium beginning very shortly in the spring. They've got about 38 or 39 weekends this year of softball activity. All of those things bring business to Oklahoma City. So we continue to see some good things happening and look forward to progressing with the Convention Center and new developments that are going on and being able to work with that in the very near future. Things are looking good. So appreciate your all's support as always, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Mike? All right, Mike, thank you for coming in.
Next up is an update on our council priorities. Get some up. Council adopted the new priorities last week from a briefing or from a workshop that was done earlier in the fall. So we're continuing our practice today of updating regularly on each of the priorities, and today we'll present on promote safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods. Those are the entire council priorities there, and they're new icons next to them. This is a, this is the full text of the priority that focuses on public safety services, effective code enforcement and support for neighborhood revitalization efforts. And the indicators on each priority will be presented today by police, fire, planning, and development services. Each of the department heads will discuss these identified indicators along with other data and efforts that relates to the priority. And first up is Chief City.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce, I have a, I have a Bill Dean from a deputy chief from Virginia Beach. He's here this week shadowing our department. He's part of Major City Chiefs Program. It's about a three-week program where they, a major city chief mentors a deputy chief that has potential to be a chief in their community. And Bill Dean's here for the week, so enjoy having him. So, we're going to discuss what, some of the, some of the things the police department measure to support the council's priority of providing a safe and secure community. Obviously, we do a lot of things, and a lot of things we measure, but we're going to highlight some of the things that I know that you and the public expect to see. The first one's going to be our homicide rate for two thousand and sixteen. And this is an actual, most of our UCR, we can only do up till October because we haven't reported out yet, and then we'll, but we'll estimate in these charts. Homicide is a, is an up-to-date number. We had seventy homicides according to UCR. UCR does not count officer-involved shootings that result in death. They don't, they don't count justifiable homicide, those types of things. So, even though we had more homicides, seventy-eight total this year, seventy of them are actually counted by the FBI in our Uniform Crime Report. So, that's the number that you see. The year before, we had seventy-three. Of course, the low year here was two thousand and fourteen where it dipped significantly. But seventy last year, which is, is lower than we had the year before. The next one's going to be rapes. We've discussed this before. You see the marked increase in two thousand and eleven. We think a lot of that's going to be contributed to change in definition the FBI made to what a rape is. It included a lot more individuals than, than just females. So, that's, we think that's the primary reason for that. Now, last year, this is going to be up till October, and we kind of estimate out for the remainder of the year based on what we had seen up till October. You can see we have, we have four-hundred-and-sixty-eight that we have estimated for the full year of two thousand and sixteen. And again, that hasn't been fully reported out, but it's, we, we think it's going to show a few less than what we had in two thousand and fifteen. Robberies, same thing. We had a, you know, a lowering of robberies this year, which is, you know, which is kind of surprising. Most categories and most of these crimes against person nationally are up this year, homicides, assaults primarily. Robberies have fluctuated between different cities, but you can see here where we're estimating a lower number for two thousand and sixteen than we had, we've had in the Aggravated assaults, which to me is one of the most important slides that we have up there. You can look at homicides, that's going to fluctuate regardless of what we do. Assaults is basically a really good statistic to look at as far as a trend goes because a homicide is just the, is just the worst outcome or worst result of an aggravated assault. So, they get good medical care, then it doesn't become a homicide. But the aggravated, most of these are shootings, the aggravated assaults, you can see here, we went up quite a bit this last year. We had over four-hundred more aggravated assaults, about four-hundred-and-fifty or so more. So, that's concerning. One year obviously doesn't make a trend, but it's something that we want to look at and address and identify and, you know, do a better job on. There's, there's a lot of different, probably a lot of different reasons, but aggravated assaults across the country have really spiked considerably. The second measure through our LFR is, is we show in calendar year sixteen aggravated assaults. Again, our chart you saw previously, we estimate there's going to be thirty-five-hundred aggravated assaults reported in two thousand and sixteen. Since we started the LFR, our five-year goal was to try to reduce those aggravated assaults over that period of time by five percent each year. Really, after the three years of decline, really the last three years prior to this, we've had a decline where we saw almost a, we almost, we saw a significant decrease, some as high as thirteen percent decrease over the last three years in that category of aggravated assaults. This year, we're looking at almost a fourteen percent increase. So, some of the headway we made over the last several years is going to be taken away by the marked increase. Now, we didn't change our LFR. We're still, we're kind of still shooting for a five percent reduction, and hopefully we can, we can deal with that. Drive-by shootings went up, that accounts for some of them. We had drive-by shootings this year that, that went up considerably over the past several The next, next one is violent crime clearance rates. You can see here what our clearance rate is, and we show the national average. Now, the average, national average includes all law enforcement agencies. So, even though that includes, we put that up there to compare on the national level what the average is, but one of the, probably the more, better things to look at is those cities that we compare to in size. It's more apples to apples when you do that. But in this chart, you can see where our homicide had a sixty-five percent clearance rate. And this is two thousand, in two thousand and fifteen, because we don't have two thousand and sixteen completed yet. Two thousand and fifteen was sixty-five percent. The national average was sixty-one percent. Just for comparison, comparable cities, our size was fifty percent clearance rate. So, you can see where our clearance rate of sixty-six percent is considerably more than what a fifty percent average in comparable cities. It's even better than, than the national average overall. Aggravated assaults, you can see the difference here, fifty-four percent. Ours is fifty-six percent. But if we compare it to cities our size, that average is forty-one percent. So, our fifty-six percent is considerably higher rate. Thirty-six percent is actually a comparable average to other cities. You see up here, the overall national average is almost thirty-eight percent. In two thousand and sixteen through October, our actual, our actual clearance rate was forty-eight percent. So, it was up quite a bit. The robbery, same thing, up, the national average twenty-nine percent. And we show in comparable cities, twenty-one percent, it being the, being the average. And we, we clear about thirty-one percent, at least we show that up through October two thousand and sixteen.
Does, does a clearance rate mean a conviction or an admission?
Not necessarily.
What, what does that mean?
No, it means that the case has been solved by one means or the other. We may have, we may have determined that an individual did it, but it doesn't mean a conviction rate because you, especially like in things like robbery, there's going to be multiple robberies. You may have one individual that's committed multiple robberies, he may not be tried on all those robberies. But all those robberies that he did are, are in that statistic. And so, those robberies are cleared by just one individual. And a lot of these are, homicide's not, doesn't have aggravated assaults would be the same issue because you may have an individual that does multiple drive-bys, those types You can see in the citizen survey in two thousand and fifteen, we looked at the percentage of citizens who report they feel safe citywide. We, our, our target has always been fifty-five since two thousand and five. When we started our leading for results, we benched market at fifty-five because that's what the survey showed. That was the first year of us having LFR. And so, we benched market at what we had at that point. We were trying to do better and not lose ground. So, we've kept it as our target. And you can see here in two thousand and fifteen, we were at fifty-three percent. But in two thousand, calendar year two thousand and sixteen, our survey was, was only forty-eight percent. So, it was considerably lower in two thousand and sixteen. And if you, you can look in the next, next slide, the percentage of citizens who report they feel safe, again, kind of historical perspective. In two thousand and eleven, we had fifty-four percent. You can see the highest in this chart's fifty-eight percent, and the lowest is going to be calendar year two thousand and sixteen, which is going to be last year. So, it's going to fluctuate, but if it stays at forty-eight percent, that would be somewhat concerning. Police response time is one of the other measurements we've had for quite a few years since we did the staffing study. We created this response time. And the way we measure our response time is from the time that a person calls into nine-one-one, from the time dispatch picks up the phone, from the time we get to the scene. We picked up the phone, take the information, send it to the officer, and by the time they arrive on the scene, that's what we measure. And all of our Priority One calls, which are calls which may be life-threatening, we try, what we do is we measure those. How many, what percentage of those calls do we get to within nine minutes and thirty seconds? So, that's how we measure it, and we started measuring it that way since we did the staffing study. Original staffing study, we looked at ninety percent based on, on the consultant, and we lowered that to eighty percent. Ninety percent, we found out was going to be extremely high and probably not achievable. So, so we lowered it to eighty percent several years ago. And you can see in fiscal year sixteen, our actual is going to be almost seventy-two percent. And if you look at thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, or you can actually see that since fourteen, we've stayed right at about seventy-two percent. Our highest year was in two, in two thousand and eleven, where it was seventy-five percent. And so, it's, you can see where, and actually the target, you can see where we changed it. We changed it in year fiscal year sixteen to eighty percent from ninety. So, we usually average around seventy-one or seventy-two percent and have struggled to get it, to get it any higher. There's probably several reasons for that, and it's, you know, we're a growing city. We're getting more calls for service. Every year, we average a few more calls for service that we respond to. Those are going to have an impact. Right now, we have, as far as staffing goes, we're, we're getting ready to, we have our fifty-eight recruits that got out of, got out of our class last year, which is our largest class. They'll be out on the street on their own in April. We will have, probably, we'll have more officers on the street than we've ever had at that point. And, but again, it's keeping up with a lot of the calls for service and the things that we do that's going to keep, that's going to drive that response rate along. So, are there any questions?
Do we have any statistics that show the, it seems to me there are, there should be some correlation between the number of sworn officers, the number of officers we have in the field, and the, the number of people we serve? That keeps increasing all the time. So, in order to hold our own, and with these percentages, we'd have to do a better job every, all the time to, even to hold our own because the population is increasing when we're not being able to increase manpower on the streets. Do we have any statistics that correlate that increasing population to our ability to respond?
Well, I mean, we, I mean, we do a correlation, we've done correlations between officers, the number of officers and calls for service or crime. That correlation's, we do, is done all the time. In fact, you'll see those correlations made really statistically by the FBI and those types of things. But it's hard, it's hard to compare if you're going to look at us versus other cities because we have, you know, we cover a lot of miles. We, we're spread out, as you well know, in your ward. And so, we cover such a great amount of area, and part of policing is just police presence. You know, lowering crime and making people feel safe, when we take this questionnaire, a lot of it has to do with how often they've seen a scout car in their neighborhood. Not necessarily what actually we do and the data that they, that they analyze and decide we're doing a good job. It's how often they feel, they see an officer around and they feel safe, and what they see on the news. That impacts it also. And so, but I, yes, we do correlations with that, and there is a correlation between the number of officers you have, the number of calls for service. And obviously, you need officers as, as, as population grows. And as, because as population grows, your crime rate is going to go up, you know. It's, there's going to be a correlation there also. Regardless of what you do, more people, there's still going to be more crime. But we, we, we track that, and then there's all kinds of formulas out there. You know, we kind of stayed away from the formula of, you know, of exactly how many officers nationally that most cities have per thousand. You know, there's those types of correlations with population and, you know, how many officers you should have if you have, you know, half a million people or six-hundred-thousand people. So, and, and we look at those, but it's, you know, the study that we did goes in much more depth, and I think it's still valuable, obviously. We still use it, we update it, and it's, and it takes into consideration calls for service, the size that we have to cover, the miles we have to cover, the types of calls we have. Because even with, with a serious call like an armed robbery, you may need three or four officers respond to a serious, you know, crime like that. Where a burglary, you only need one officer. So, we took all those things into consideration in, in trying to evaluate how many officers we need. Of course, the staffing study told us that, and you all have added some officers in the last, you know, last three or four years, so.
Well, I know we can bring the statistics down, you know, we have them citywide. It can be brought down by wards.
Yes.
But in a ward like mine, and I suspect Larry and James and John all represent wards like mine, in that award number doesn't really help me very much because I have people that live, you know, I, I don't know how wide my ward is, but it's wide. You know, it goes from Otten County to western in Oklahoma City. So, the north and south, it goes Midwest City to Little Axe. So, to use a crime statistic for my ward is really kind of misleading because you have to know where the crimes occur to know where it is. Do we break them down further than just by ward? Do we have them?
No, we can break, we can break them down anyway, and we have. But the bottom line is, we actually, most of the time, we look at where the crime occur.
Right.
If it's in your ward, it's in your ward. Now, that doesn't mean you don't have, you know, part, part of your population going outside your ward, or, or part of somebody else's ward coming into your ward.
Right.
We can't, you know, we, we don't break it down like that, but...
Well, we don't think there are any actual criminals that live in ward.
I don't think so either.
They're probably...
I think you're, you run a very good ward.
Some other place, I'm sure. But I would like to see crime, a, a statistic on my ward and maybe some of the others that represent the bigger, more spread-out wards would appreciate the same thing of the, I can tell you, if it might, from my ward, it would probably be Interstate thirty-five East, I mean, east and west, or maybe even Sooner, east and west, because there's such a dramatic difference in the populations in both areas that to use the one number for my ward just doesn't help me.
Yeah, I, we can break, we can break any, we can break it down to blocks.
Yeah.
We can break it down into whatever segment of that ward that you want. I'm not sure I can break it down to where suspects have committed those crimes, where we know who the suspect is, where they live. I maybe could, but that's kind of misleading.
I'm just looking for where they're committed because that's, the where they're committed is what generates questions from your constituents. They're the victim of the crime, or they're the next-door neighbor, and they're the one that measures the time. They don't, they're not nearly as concerned about where the guy came from as to how long it takes us to get there to hold their hand, even after a burglary.
Right.
So, if, if you could produce them, my ward, say, from using Sooner as a dividing line.
Uh huh.
East and west from Sooner, I'd just like to see that. I've had some, I've had a couple of comments from town meetings that what I would like to have said, and I didn't say at that time, was that I'm confident, a hundred percent confident, that we allocate manpower based on, on crime statistics.
We do.
But that wouldn't have helped the person who had been broken into because he's a hundred percent crime statistic, so.
Yes. Doesn't matter, doesn't...
But it seems to me that, that maybe some numbers like that would be helpful.
At any time on any of your wards, if you've got it how you want it broken down, if you'll just email me how you want it broken down, I will, we will provide any of those statistics to you if you have a special area. So, that's, you know, that's the best way. Just email me the area within your ward or whatever you want. We'll do, we'll provide whatever we can. Glad to.
Thanks.
Okay.
We've talked about combining a police and fire training facility, which would change the way we train our officers with it in the GO bond. How much more work needs to go into, I mean, has that been designed? Do we know what that looks like, or there's more work?
I think we've, we've, we put that into our request in, in the GO bond, and I think that's the first step. And we've, 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 we have, in the GO bond, we've determined what we think the cost of that would be, an adequate facility and the things we need both for fire and police. So, that's going to come before you at some point, I assume. And then, in the decision, then after that, if, if it's decided to be a GO bond project, then we will move forward after that and starting looking at specific designs.
Would you envision everything be driving, shooting range, everything being in one place?
Yeah. Well, the way we, the way we looked at the cost was keeping the, keeping the range there. It's on the property where the range is, out off of, out of, off of two-forty and Air Depot. And so, we've got the firing range there. We would have to update it, we have to improve that a lot. And then, we would do a driving, we'd like to do a driving track both for fire and police, which would be beneficial, but we really don't have now. We have to use other people's, other departments' facilities. And then, some other, some other things out there that handle our bomb, our bomb technicians, things like that, K-9. So, it's all been designed around what we think we would like to put on that facility and what fire would like to put on that facility. And it's a joint. Fire, you'll, I think you'll find in this community, fire and police work more closely together than any, any departments across the country. You know, I mean, we really do, do a lot of training together. Fire will come in and do some training with us. We work together tactically, things like that, and emergency responses. So, it's, it's, it'll be, it'll be a facility that I think that will accommodate everything that we think we needed for the coming future. everything that we think we needed for the coming future.
So, if, if we did that, would we pull out completely from OSU, OKC, and all of?
That would be the plan.
Okay.
All right.
Isn't there a plan a foot bill to, isn't OSU, OKC requesting that we do pull out in sometime? And it...
We have, we have like a, I think we have a lease, a really low lease for like two thousand fifty, and they are eager to take over that facility. They've expanded, they, yes, they would love for us to, to be out.
Mark?
Couple of quick questions. How are these statistics communicated to our officers? And then, secondly, how much has the downturn in the economy since two thousand fourteen affected the two thousand sixteen statistics?
Well, I mean, you can see, you can see by the statistics up there, most of this is going to be under the recent economy, the downturn. I mean, you know, it takes a little while. You can see now, not maybe that first year, but now by two thousand sixteen, not fifteen, but sixteen, we're, I think we're seeing the effects of some of that. You know, people try to tie things like person crimes, property crimes into the economy. It's never really, it's never really worked out that way. Social scientists have looked at that, and there's, there's not a huge correlation. And I haven't seen that over the years, that, you know, I've been here. Sometimes there is, sometimes there's not. And, and a lot of times, it could be your crime could be really good, which brings in more people to the state, brings more people into, you know, the oil fields, or, and your crime goes up, because you have more people, you have more crimes of opportunity, let me say, you have more money, things like that. There's certain crimes that may go up, white collar crime and those types of things. But I, 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 I'm kinda careful to, to make that association, at least in, at least in the short term. So, and statistically, across the department, officers can pull up most anything. We, you know, we provide data to officers, and we try to provide specific data to their areas, where they can look in their areas and see what, over a period of time, what's going on, because we want them to police knowing where the crimes are, maybe be proactive.
Thank you. David?
Chief. You know, I, I agree, it didn't look like there was a, a strong correlation between economic conditions in general and the amount of crime, because it could go up or down. But could you drill down and say, you know, an increase in, in adult males below the poverty line tends to increase criminal activity? Or could you say, for example, that the increase in the use of drugs tends to lead to more criminal activities? And if that's the case, then any ways we can, as a city, work to help address that, those types of situations?
I'll agree with both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, both. I mean, economically, the better off a neighborhood is, the less crime it's gonna be. I mean, it's, 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 a lot of the crimes, and especially a lot, I mean, not, I say especially, but a lot of the crimes, whether it's property or assaults, person crimes, you'll find that. And that's why a lot of our resources, they get a lot more of our resources, because that's where our calls for service are. And that's where we have to be, especially priority one calls, in those lower income neighborhoods, and that's, you know, whether it's gang related or, or whatever, it's, that's what's, you know, that happens. And so, that's why I said, you know, when I first made chief, when the city manager made me chief thirteen years ago, the first thing they asked was, what can we do to lower crime? And I said, improve education. Because statistics show, if you can get somebody out of high school, they're less likely to be involved in crime or gangs. And that's statistically, that's shown. So, the more education, the better off you are in, in those neighborhoods. It's, you know, it helps.
All right. Chief, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Next is Chief, uh, Chief Brian.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Good to be with you this morning. We'll be discussing, as far as the fire department's concerned, our key measures of our response. And those include, and they're broken down into components, which I'll explain, is that the, the main two components are the dispatch time. So, when either nine-one-one picks up the phone and, and starts taking the information on the emergency, that processing time, and then the, from the time the units at the fire stations get that information and respond to that scene, and, and arrive on the scene of the emergency. So, our, our key measures within that whole response time continuum are that we dispatch fire incidents within one minute ninety percent of the time. IMSA-related or EMS-related calls, nine-one-one incidents that may go through PD's dispatchers before they actually get to our dispatchers. We want those, although there's, sometimes we don't have the, any control over the time that that takes, we would like for those types of calls to get dispatched within two minutes ninety percent of the time. And then, on fire and EMS responses from the station to the scene of the emergency, we want to, uh, both of those categories, five minutes seventy percent of the time. So, that all results in a total response time of seven minutes, and we want to be able to achieve that seventy percent of the time. Again, as I said, this measure is from when the phone is picked up at nine-one-one to when our units arrive on the scene. And that phone pickup is the actual time that, uh, or for police-initiated calls, that the nine-one-one operator answers that call. If, in the case of a emergency medical incident, that call is initially transferred to IMSA. They have their, what they refer to as their Pro QA protocol, that they'll prioritize that call. And then, if it's something that's a higher priority or, or life-threatening, then, then they will send that call to our dispatchers, and we'll dispatch it at that point. So, again, when you have that process or that, that transfer being able to take place, that, that we see where we lose about twelve to eighteen seconds during that, uh, transfer process. This graph indicates that dispatch time. As you can see, on fire-related calls, we're a little bit above eighty percent currently to make, that, we gather that information from the forehand party and dispatch that incident. And for EMS calls or, or ones that do go through PD, in that two-minute timeframe, we're right at the seventy percent in, in terms of dispatching those calls within two minutes. From that component, within five minutes, from the time that the units are dispatched to the time they're on scene, as you can see for fire-related calls, we're right at sixty percent. EMS calls, right at sixty percent also. These are the actuals over the past few years that you can see. Fiscal year two thousand fourteen and, and some sixty-two thousand incidents, almost sixty-three thousand, we were at fifty-eight point four-five percent. As you can see, we've been getting better and getting closer to our target of seventy percent, where, where we're at currently in the, in the current fiscal year, at sixty-six point three percent. I think that's probably due, that improvement is due to a couple of internal measures that we've taken, both on the dispatch side, where we were looking at the individual dispatchers and, and their, their performance in dispatching calls, and where improvement was needed. We, we provided training and, and see some improvement there. On the response side, we were looking at individual fire company, fire units out there, and, uh, if we saw some performance issues, we addressed those. So, I think those two, those two things right there were, have, have helped us in making these improvements that, that we're reporting today. And so, that, that's a graph that shows you that total response time within seven minutes, and how that's been trending upward, closer to that seventy percent target. This is a breakdown of the total incidents for the la, or since fiscal year two thousand ten up to the current. It shows you, one, the, the total number of incidents that we responded to, and then a breakdown percentage-wise, the, the blue beam EMS incidents, emergency medical, and that makes up approximately seventy-five percent of our total call volume. The red area there is other, and that includes automatic alarm responses, technical rescue, hazardous materials incident responses. And then, the, and those are about twenty-one percent. And then, uh, fire-related calls, be it structure, vehicle, wildland, that makes up about four percent of our total call volume. The other thing that it shows you is in fiscal year twelve, many of you remember that we changed our protocol in responding to emergency medical incidents, and that we would only begin or start to respond to the higher priority or, or life-threatening medical incidents. So, you can see where that, uh, we responded to a lot less, and that was necessary and, and something that we needed to do. But as you can also see, and what we believed to be the case at the time, that, that the demand would continue to grow, so we're inching back up toward where we were in fiscal year twelve, even though we're still responding according to that protocol.
What is, what is in the other category?
That, again, that's basically anything that's not fire-related or emergency medical-related. So, again, responding to automatic alarms, when, when a fire alarm in a building trips, and we're responding to that to make sure that there is a fire or not a fire. Technical rescue incidents, like a dive rescue or underwater rescue, hazardous materials incidents would fall into that category. So, again, anything that's just not specifically related to medical or fire.
Yeah, Chief, I wanted to just take this opportunity to compliment you on the job you did this weekend on the big grass fire we had out in my area. A lot of constituents contacted me about it and complimented on the way you, you guys handled it.
Well, it was a good team effort, and as Chief City just told you, you know, we had great cooperation from our police department, our Office of Emergency Management, and not only that, but, uh, the state, the Forest Street Department, uh, at the county level, at other cities that, that came to assist us too. So, it was a great team effort. We had a lot of good help, and, uh, yeah, firefighters worked hard and made a priority of protecting property out there.
All that being said, you guys did a great job, and, and I, I very much appreciated it, very much so. It does bring up a couple of thoughts I have. One is that we sure could have used that fire station that we had to defer because of the financing and, and the personnel. It's my understanding that we worked out a system where we can probably go ahead and start it, based on some of the conversations that the manager and I had with the union concerning personnel, it may be possible to negotiate some changes in personnel and be able to staff it. And most of you remember that we can, we postponed the construction of that fire station because we didn't have the money to hire the personnel to, to, to.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a strategy you will bring forth during the budget.
I'm, I'm glad to see we're gonna put it back on the table. The other thing is, one thing I learned about, from the water thing over the years, is, because I had an opportunity to visit some of the southeast Oklahoma City controlled, southeast Oklahoma controlled burn sites, that places like that, we need to have them on the list to do controlled burns when we can. We just, we need to, because when you look at land, you know, nature would have burnt, burned it, what, every ten, twelve years, something, it would have naturally burned. We've got areas, I, I don't know, I, I know in Ward Seven and in Ward Four, we have lots of acres that haven't been burned in fifty, seventy-five years. You think the underbrush is not thick in that situation? I mean, it, it is just a torch waiting to be set out there. And the only way to do that is through controlled burns. And the only way to really make it effective is to work a situation where we can do controlled burns on private property. We can do them at the, at the Elm Creek Reservoir, and the Draper Reservoir, and some other places, but we can't do them on private property, but, because we don't have the state law that permits it. We ought to be looking forward to getting permission, with, with the landowner's permission, to do controlled burns on private property.
I agree. Do a better job than land management.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Can I ask you to clarify just something about emergency medical transport? When people have debated different systems, like in the media, I, it seems, you know, they've talked about the IMSA model, the public utility model, or fire doing emergency medical transport. And it seems like I've heard you talk about a third option, which is kind of a hybrid of that, keeping a third party, like AMR or Paramedics Plus, doing the actual emergency medical transport, but having the fire and the city negotiate the contract with them. And so, you, you kinda cut with Tulsa, but just kinda have this region maybe negotiate with a third party. Is that a viable option, do you think?
Well, it certainly works in other communities. So, again, it is one of several models, where basically the city is the, you know, the manager of the contract, and, and it gives, I think, maybe the city several options. It certainly gives the city a little bit more control of the system, and direct say over the system. The hybrid system that, that you mentioned, a little bit different in that maybe the, the fire department transports on the higher priority calls, and then there might be a private that, that does some of the lower priority or, or transfers, not emergency transfers. So, it, it's kind of a hybrid of a, a, a fire and a, and a private system.
Okay. But you'd still, the ambulances would still on the, would still say Paramedics Plus or AMR or whatever?
Or both.
Or both?
Yeah.
Okay. And have they, have they approached you? Have these vendors come to you and said, this is, this is what's happening in other cities?
From time to time, they'll stop in and, and visit just to see how we're doing things, to see how it's working for us, and then they'll talk about what, what is going on in other communities.
Have you seen that particular model work in other cities, or other cities moving towards that model?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Chief, thanks. Next up is Aubrey Hammond Creed, to talk about Aubrey McDermott, to talk about our planning efforts.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having me. This is a wonderful thing that our council does, come together and develop these priorities for our community, really focusing on the core issues and allowing all our city departments to come report the piece of the work that they do to contribute to it. And today, there's four departments that are working on this council priority for safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods, although many city departments do contribute to this. What I wanted to highlight, that the planning department works on in our daily job, is more of the neighborhood revitalization and some of the education initiatives. So, the progress indicator that city council likes us to report on, and one of them is how residents feel about the overall quality of their neighborhood. In two thousand and fourteen, we established a multi-tiered survey question for our public, because we wanted to drill down on why people feel the way they do about their neighborhood quality. So, we're asking people to rate individual things that contribute to satisfaction with their neighborhoods, one being safety, appearance, property maintenance, overall sense of community, amenities, which would be things like sidewalks, lighting, bike lanes, trees, streetscapes, and then the overall quality rating. In fiscal year fourteen, we established our target measure to be a sixty-five percent overall satisfaction rate. Oklahoma City has maintained very positive satisfaction rates in many, many categories, including this one. And I think that last year's citizen survey overall had a dip. Across the board, we saw that slight dip transfer to this question as well. We're still at an overall rating of sixty-one percent, but being able to look at these individual components gives us an idea of where we can focus our efforts more strategically to try to improve overall satisfaction with our neighborhoods. The other thing that the planning department has programs and federal funding to be able to assist in efforts to do neighborhood revitalization, wanted to highlight a few of the things that we work on. Overall, the, the planning department in the city is led by a comprehensive plan to help us manage and guide growth. The comprehensive plan reinforces throughout the plan the need to create stable, mixed-income communities, to revitalize and strengthen our neighborhoods, to encourage preservation of existing neighborhoods, and to promote high-quality development. So, in many ways, our day-to-day decision-making process through Planning Commission and City Council reinforces these things that help encourage the quality of our neighborhoods. And we have other plans and initiatives and programs that we administer in the planning department, in addition to the day-to-day operational administration of the comprehensive plan. We do special district and special area plans to help us kind of drill down into parts of Oklahoma City that may be experiencing changing dynamics, and get some strategies and potential funding sources behind those. We also have a program funded by federal funds for the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, which was a pilot program we started in two thousand thirteen. Many of our other programs that really get at the heart of neighborhood revitalization are funded by federal funds, including our home program, down payment assistance, to help people get into new homes that otherwise would not have been able to afford it. Loan programs and rehab programs for homes that people probably wouldn't have spent money otherwise to do those types of, of rehabs of those homes, that help strengthen the quality of neighborhoods, building new homes in neighborhoods, doing infill homes in neighborhoods. That all helps strengthen not only the bones of the neighborhood physically, but also the economic and social pieces of bringing neighborhoods together. So, the pilot program that we started in twenty twelve and two thousand thirteen, So the pilot program that we started in 2012 and 2013, the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, I know you're very familiar with this project, and we began this work in three neighborhoods. And these three neighborhoods, over the past three or four years, have all shown signs of strengthening in different ways. We went into these areas knowing that there were challenges, there were crime challenges, property value challenges, the community itself didn't seem very cohesive. So it was a multi-pronged approach, a holistic approach, and going into that, establishing goals so that we could help these neighborhoods become self-sufficient. And through our model, we could provide some funding to rebuild the physical components of the neighborhood, to do infill housing projects, repair homes that were there, help improve that economic and educational kind of quality of life in that neighborhood. We've partnered with the Neighborhood Alliance to help us do some capacity building in the neighborhood, to help them become more organized, get tools together so that they can become proponents of protecting the safety and the quality of their neighborhood, and hopefully overall see the health and the safety improve. So the funding that we've received over the past several years, it totaled about $5.5 million for these three different neighborhoods, and you can see all of the physical improvements that that funding has been able to provide to those neighborhoods. In terms of homes being built or rehabbed, infrastructure, sidewalks, trees planted, bus shelters, neighborhood signs, public art, we've taken out old hazardous trees, and we've also funded after-school programs for students and gotten neighborhoods to meet together and get to know their neighbors, which is the true strength of neighborhoods. And being able to show the impact that that $5.5 million in city investment has against private investment is a very positive trend. The goal by 2018 is that we see a four-to-one ratio in non-city-to-city dollars, and we're on track in reaching that. Other indicators of progress in these areas, we really did want to impact the safety of these neighborhoods and the value of neighborhoods, and taking those neighborhoods that were starting to decline in their property maintenance and property value and stabilize or improve them. So in all three neighborhoods, we've had positive or an effect of either positive or stable stabilization, increases in home prices per square foot across all three neighborhoods that we've worked in, and the crime incidents have decreased in two of the three neighborhoods. However, that third neighborhood where the crime incidents did not decrease, it is still well below the city average. The other programs that we do have through federal funding provide assistance for people in single-family homes. And like I mentioned before, to provide down payment assistance to people, we, this last year, we were able to assist 24 families in buying new homes through the home program. We're able to build new homes in some neighborhoods to help stabilize those neighborhoods through infill projects. And then other programs, like our housing rehab program, was able to rehabilitate 52 homes in Oklahoma City. And then those homes that needed emergency home repair just to become livable again, we were able to provide funding for 78 homes and invested almost $300,000 in getting those homes back up to a place where people could live safely in them. So these are some of the programs that we have, depending on federal funds, would like to continue to do this type of work. It's fundamental. And as we talked before with previous presentations, crime, safety, sense of security, economic viability, the poverty issue, those are all things that contribute to strong neighborhoods. And these are the things that we're able to leverage and help stabilize and tip when we can really pull resources together and focus efforts from all these city departments. And I think that these three pilot programs in the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative area have shown, when we pull together, we can see progress made.
All right, questions for Aubrey?
On the three pilot programs, you mentioned $5.5 million received. What's the likelihood that that will continue in the future for other projects?
We really do hope that we can continue to get it. It's about $2 million per year that we get allocated to maintain that program. The three neighborhoods that we've been working in are getting to the point where we're about ready to graduate those program, those neighborhoods out of the program and look at establishing and offering up maybe some new neighborhoods coming on board. We've learned a whole lot about putting the program together, things that work, partnerships that work, and every year, it's dependent on those federal fund allocations. We have no idea, knowing that federal funds every year have been slightly decreasing. So we're very, very hopeful that because of the success of the program and the benefit that it's providing to the city, we'll still be able to receive something. We may not be able to work in three neighborhoods at the same time. We may have to focus on one or two neighborhoods at a time, but as long as we can continue the momentum, we'd be happy to get any amount that we can.
All right.
Anybody else? Yeah.
There are neighborhoods south of the river in four different councilman's wards, in John's Ward, My Ward, Meg's Ward, and Larry's Ward, immediately south of the river, that are certainly as challenged as the ones you're working in, maybe even more so. What's the possibility of moving some of that money out of the, to the south part of Oklahoma City?
Our goal is to be able to strategically move into areas. The concentration of these three neighborhoods kind of in a similar place in Oklahoma City was not something that I think we set out to do. It just happened through the process of the application process, looking at candidates that would be good and good candidates for the program. But there is a need to take this program and start moving it. There's a synergistic effect, I think, when you can.
You don't need to defend the fact that it all went north. I've lived here all my life, and I'm past that. But I want to know how to get one, I want to know how to get one south.
Yeah. I think that's the next area that we really need to concentrate trying to move efforts because I do believe that it has the ripple effect in that.
What would a neighborhood have to do? One of the problems in it, this has always been a problem in representing South Oklahoma City, the neighborhoods have never been organized in South Oklahoma City the way they were in North Oklahoma City. They just weren't. Mark grew up over there, he knows what I'm talking about. He lived in it, then some of the newer neighborhoods, and they weren't organized as neighborhoods. So when you look at how well you're going to be able to submit an application, it's going to depend a lot on whether the neighborhood is sophisticated enough to have participated as a group in anything.
We haven't established that specific criteria yet because there are neighborhoods that are going to need more help getting organized and building capacity that may have other significant potential that shouldn't deter them from being able to seek funding through this program. That's one of the benefits of being in the program. I'm not sure that in this next round that we look at, if it's going to be an application process with a hard scoring system, or we look for the best places that we can focus our resources regardless of how well they're organized or what types of partnerships and programs they already have established.
Well, Neighborhood Alliance is finally starting to make some inroads in the neighborhood organizations, and they're doing it around schools, which I predicted would be the way it would have to work. They're doing it around schools, they're organizing around Bodine, around Hayes, around Heronville. Those are three, Lee, I think, they're all ones that I know of. But you can look all the way from the Schilling area over where Schadler School is, that's in, that's in John's Ward, to the Capitol Hill area that's in My Ward, to the area immediately east of that, the Stockyards and all that, that's in Meg Ward's, and then on further west to where Larry has some very distressed neighborhoods there. I just think it's time to move that out of, so more people in the city, not so much from the standpoint of a north-south thing, but as long as it stays concentrated in one area, the rest of the people in the city don't even know it's happening.
Right.
It has to happen close to it. You have to be able to see it. You have to be able to visualize how, what a great thing it is to do it.
Right. It's our intent.
I just would like to, I will, if, when you get ready to decide, I may not be here to talk to you about it, but I'll be whispering in your ear, don't, don't do it unless you look at the south neighborhoods.
All right, Larry?
Little historical perspective, I'm sure you're aware of, Aubrey, but a number of years ago, there was a sister organization with the Neighborhood Alliance, South Oklahoma City Council of Neighborhoods. We endeavored to take the same model, if you will, from the Neighborhood Alliance, using the South Oklahoma City Council of Neighborhoods, and we went into a neighborhood that met the distressed characteristics you're talking about. And one of the things we found there, unfortunately, you called it sophistication of the neighborhood, I'll call it apathy, the neighbors were so beaten down that they failed to have hope that they could turn it around. And we started some Chodos over there, which were highly successful. And then we've hit on another thing which doesn't fit the model, but may have some bearing as we move forward, and that is one of the distressed neighborhoods over there is River Park. And what we did for River Park, among other things, was we got them on the 2007 Bond Program with New Streets and Sidewalk. And that has, from an infrastructure standpoint, hasn't changed the heart necessarily of a lot of people, but from an infrastructure standpoint, has really transformed the particular neighborhood. Now coming up still in the 2007 Bond Program, we have another series of neighborhoods that basically go from Woodson Park to the south on May Avenue to the west, and they are already set for bond money to do the streets, which they dearly need. Maybe we could look at tying what you're talking about here with the Strategic Neighborhood Initiative and the Bond Program together as another resource of funds that may supplement the lack of federal funds that you might otherwise use.
To Larry's point, do you have a short list of potential candidates now, or you'd have, or we'd have to do that before?
No, we haven't started developing the program details for the next phase. We're still trying to wrap up the three neighborhoods that we're working in on kind of their phase-out strategy. We have started discussions internally about what that might look like, if there's a type of a process that we would do, a first pass in identifying areas of the city that would be the best candidates with the most need, and then maybe having some sort of a committee structure that could evaluate neighborhoods. We're still developing that tool. We're open to input to.
When you do that, remember my name. I'd like to be involved.
Yes, sir.
All right, Aubrey, thanks. And Bob Keener's up next.
I'm going to talk briefly about Development Services and the things that we do to support neighborhoods. And Pete, we have plenty of work in South Oklahoma City. These are the divisions and some of the programs that we do, and every one of the divisions in the Development Services Department directly interact with the public and neighborhoods. I'm going to talk briefly about animal welfare. We have several community programs. We have a citywide spade and neuter program. We do about 5,000 spade and neuters for city, for residents of Oklahoma City for free of charge. They do several outreach programs where they go out to neighborhoods and try to teach them how to raise animals, how to keep animals, what to do if they have, if there's loose animals. Just give them, the neighborhoods, the opportunity to interact with us and know who to call if they have problems. We also have, we partner with over 100 different partners for adoption events. We have a mobile adoption unit that we can go on the road with our adoption programs. It's just another way for us to reach out to the neighborhoods. We also have a very active volunteer program. And I'd also like to mention the Development Center. In addition to their inspections and permits and licensing that they do, in May of every year, there's a Building Safety Month, and they'll go, we partner with Lowe's, and they'll set up a table there, and they'll talk to people about when permits are required and safety issues and those types of things. Just another way for us to reach out to the community. This is a slide I like to show all the time. This is our live release rate. Right now, ultimately, our goal is to try to get a 75% live release rate. Right now, we're estimating 70% for '17, but the animals that come into the shelter, it's kind of seasonal, and so as spring approaches, those numbers will go up, and we'll, staff's pretty comfortable, they can get at least back to 73% by the end, by July. Next slide's code enforcement. This is where, in my opinion, we're most active in neighborhoods. They do several neighborhood association meetings, and they try to explain to the neighbors what, you know, what's allowed by code, what's not allowed by code, and then what to do if you see violations. We do public service messages that run on Channel 20. We have a neighborhood association sign contract, where I think we've contracted with 19 neighborhoods where they're allowed. We train them how to go up and pick out the trash signs that are in the neighborhoods at the major intersections. It's just really another way for them to help their neighborhood. We also partner with, well, we work with Neighborhood Alliance on the Code Enforcement 101. They tell me every year, our table gets the most questions at those meetings. You know, we understand that property maintenance issues in neighborhoods is one of the big, it's a big indicator of maybe a neighborhood under stress. So this next slide, in November of '14, we started a proactive property maintenance program throughout Oklahoma City. These green dots show that we've, this is, we've done about 12,000 inspections, work cases. This is, this shows about 9,800 of them have been closed already. This next one is, this indicates the 2,200 that are still active. I just point out the purple dots indicate, those are cases that we've worked with the property owner, and they've started to comply with the property maintenance issues, and so we've given them extensions. It's still really our goal to give, to get the problem resolved and not have to write a citation. And then this slide just shows all those cases together. You know, to me, one of the important things that I want to point out here, in 2009, we had 29 neighborhoods that we did as proactive. So that was about one neighborhood for each inspector, and they'd drive through that neighborhood monthly. And the rest of our calls were basically through the Action Center. And this year, we're averaging about 50% of our calls were proactive calls, where inspectors have gone out in the neighborhoods and have identified problems and started the case to work with those neighbors. So I think that's, this is a good, to me, a good indication that this is a citywide program, and it's been pretty effective. This last slide is percent of property maintenance resolved voluntarily. When we started, we were, you know, just under 40%, and then in the last two years, it's increased by over 20%. So I think that's, that's a product of us, you know, talking to the neighbors, being in the neighborhoods, and, you know, hopefully, we can improve on that number because every case that they resolve voluntarily, that allows us to keep it out of the courts and, you know, work other cases. Questions? Anybody has any?
All right, questions for Bob?
I have one, and it's, first of all, I want to tell you what a great job I think you guys have done with the animal welfare thing. I think what you guys have done there is beyond anybody's expectation. I mean, the live release rate being as high as it is, I mean, it's just, it's way past, I think, anyone's expectations for what you could have accomplished out there, and I know you've been a big part of that. For the first time, I've received complaints from people about our code enforcement that are not necessarily, are not strictly from the person who's in violation. They're from people that speak for groups that take the position that our code enforcement is unnecessarily designed at poor people or at immigrants. And I've done everything I can personally to defend that, but I wonder if perhaps working closer with some of these groups that are advocating for the poor might not help. Some of these faith-based organizations, I've had a couple of complaints from them, who I think are reasonable people. When I explained to them how I felt like it worked, they were a little bit pacified, but not to the extent they might have been. And I just wonder if we couldn't reach out to some of them and talk to them about what we're, why we're doing it, that it's citywide, because the person that they're complaining on behalf of happens to be in poverty, doesn't mean it's directed at people that way. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just looking for a softer approach. Charles does a great job, all you guys do. It's a tough job, I know, but I've never had that kind of pushback. I've always had complaints from the guy that was in violation, but this time, it's a little different. And I just, it's just a thought that if that opportunity presents itself, perhaps you guys might look into having us sit down or maybe go in and speak to one of their meetings or something to try to make them, make them realize that it's not based on poverty, or it's based on trying to protect neighborhoods or, and improve neighborhoods that tend to be going the other direction.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that, try to reach out.
If I get it again, I'll try to, I'll give them your name. I didn't do it because I didn't, I thought it'd be okay, but I thought I'd talk about it, but now I have a chance, so.
I think you did do that last week, right? You met with a group about the parking on the yard.
Right, we met with the individual that came to council and another individual that started the, we talked to the individual that started the online petition, and I think Charles was able to work out a lot of those, their issues. And I think Charles was able to work out a lot of those, their issues anyway.
Great.
Yeah, we do that, whenever we get an opportunity, we'll try to work through them.
Well, there are just some groups out there, they're kind of advocating for the poor, and that's the people I've had them from. And they're not unreasonable people, they're just asking questions.
Do you know, do you know the dollar amount of the citations that we collect each year on code enforcement?
I know we do, we've been doing about 25,000 to 27,000 a month, so.
Tickets or dollars?
That's the ticket. That's the amount that we, that are, that's the revenue, I don't want to call it revenue, but that's the amount.
Revenue, about 300,000 a year.
About 300,000.
Okay, and is that staying pretty much the same? I mean, or is it increasing?
We haven't seen a sharp increase.
Yeah.
Excuse me. It is increasing a little bit, but it's still.
Okay. Because I've heard in some of the groups talk about like a million dollars' worth of the parking on the yard a year, so that number would be incorrect.
Well, yeah. That, I was talking about property maintenance violations, so I'd have to get you the number on parking, I don't know that.
All right, thanks. Larry?
There's a couple of things, and Bob, just since we're on TV. We cannot use fines for like parking in the yard to support our budget. Is that not correct, Jim? If we got caught doing that, we would be in big trouble with the, with the federal people.
You know, I think I'd like to have Kenny address that.
Okay.
I know that our court costs cannot exceed the amount of operating the court system.
Because there is a, there is a group of people out there who feel that we are targeting certain groups of people for the purposes of raising revenue, and they fail to see that the reason we may be targeting a certain area is to build up the appearance, the ambiance, the quality of that neighborhood. And there's another one that we're now working on, that will be coming to you guys maybe in a couple of weeks, that will really get you excited. Non-conforming driveways, okay? That's become an issue on some people, and it has some very serious economic consequences because if you begin to park on certain driveways, you are subject to the $100 parking fine, which can run up in a hurry and impact your personal budget. So there's a lot of nuances on this thing, and some unintended consequences that I think we have to be careful about as we go down these roads of trying to improve the quality of life in our different neighborhoods.
All right, thanks, Larry.
When I was here, you're just going to have to bear with me a little bit. Only three more meetings. But when I was here before, the parking on the yard ordinance came up, and I vowed against it. And I vowed against it for the reason that I represent lots and lots of people in southeast part of Oklahoma City that don't have driveways at all. And I felt like the ordinance wasn't fair. Now, I've kind of changed my mind about it from the standpoint, and we've, the way we enforce it has been somewhat different than I feared at worst, because if they don't have a place to park, we let them park where there would be something if they were there. But it was, that problem goes back to the inception of the yard ordinance, which was in the 80s, which there was just, I just felt like there wasn't enough leeway going to be given to people that didn't have driveways. And they're, you know, we used to let people build houses without driveways, and garages, and all kinds of stuff. But I felt, I felt like we've, that our enforcement people have done a good job of recognizing that situation and moving forward with permitting people to park in a space where the driveway would have been had we mandated one before. But we'll see what happens.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Kenny, the question was, can we generate parking or violations on front yard parking more than the cost? And I'm pretty sure the answer is yes on that, because we, the violations are based upon the violations. Our court costs, though, cannot exceed what it costs for on the court system.
Yes, your fine could be higher than it is now, but the court costs are basically, have to be related to operating the court system.
Quick question. I know years ago, we gave warnings for front yard parking. What was the reason why we did away with the warnings? Refresh my memory, please.
The warnings typically go to the property owner, and the car is not always the property owner, and so.
Sorry, I didn't get that.
The car owner is not always the property owner. So a notice really isn't effective because there was no way for us to track that car, you know, for a follow-up on a citation.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you all.
We have two more quick presentations.
Two more quick presentations this morning. Bob Pankill is here to talk to us about our revenue enforcement program for the year of 2016.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Thanks, Bob.
I've been asked to provide just a quick update on the revenue enhancement, enforcement program for the city for the first half of the year. The results for the program at this point in the year were below target, but there are a number of contributing factors that have impacted our efforts, and some of this just has to do with timing. So what are the things that are contributing to some of the issues with what we normally look at? I think I've talked to you in the past that the tax commission has implemented a couple of new programs over the past two or three years. One of those is that they've been able to pass a statute that allows them to get a bit more aggressive with tracking down delinquencies. And of course, that's one of the things that we would look at as we do our monitoring. So as a result, you know, the delinquencies that the tax commission is catching now has affected us negatively, which is not a bad thing. I mean, the city still receives a tax, it's just that they're being identified a little earlier in the process. Another area that has impacted as well, that is also a tax commission initiative, is they've automated more their process for registration. I've talked to you in the past that we will often, or on a regular basis, review our boundary areas, you know, particularly those areas that we have overlapping zip codes with other jurisdictions. We identify businesses that may be paying the wrong city and get those issues corrected. Because of the fact that the tax commission is now automating a lot of the registrations, we're not seeing as many of those problems. So that's affected us as well. So where are we at with this? What we're seeing now is that for the revenue enforcement program, we see this as being kind of a transition phase for us. I think we're going to be moving a bit more away from some of the strategies that we've used in the past and maybe identifying things that we can start doing in the future. One of those programs that actually just came about recently, one of our revenue auditors in our office, Vincent Hurd, had come up with an idea. He just said, you know, could we take a look at the top 100 retailers that are paying taxes to Oklahoma City right now and see if they have online sales? And if they have online sales, could we look at those tax rates to see if they're correct? I wish we did. We initiated a review of the top 100 retailers. And the thing that we found out is that around 60% of those online sales coming from these retailers were being charged incorrect tax. So we contacted the tax commission, we've been working with them on resolving the issue. They're contacting the companies at this point in time. We don't have a dollar amount that's associated with that, but it was such a significant, I guess, fact that was uncovered through this process, that the tax commission has actually taken what we did, and they're expanding it statewide. So again, just another area that we haven't looked at in the past that we'll be looking at in the future. One of the areas that we've, has historically been a good producer of revenue for us has been the, where we initiate audits ourselves. We hire independent auditors, and they basically go in and do very targeted audits that we suggest, and that basically enhances what the tax commission does for us. For this period, we've, we've realized around 63,000 of additional revenue from that, which is actually below what we normally would be seeing from this program. But part of what we're seeing is that this past year in particular, we have completed some pretty major audits. In fact, five come to mind that we completed in this past year that we've submitted to the tax commission. And of course, it goes through all these phases of review and protest and that sort of thing. But just these five audits that we submitted, the assessments that came out of this, of course, has not been collected yet until the review's completed, but they amount to about $741,000. So again, some of these things are just, right now, just timing issues, and we're hoping to see some of the results from those audits in the near future. One of the areas that we've had benefits from in the past is from hotel, hotel tax reviews. We review hotel tax payments, identify where they've maybe claimed some exemptions that they shouldn't have, and so far this year, that alone has resulted in around $209,000. The thing is that we kind of expect that to start going down as well in the not-too-distant future because we just implemented a, an online application where hotel operators can now pay online. We implemented enough checks and balances within the application that it'll actually catch those exemption issues before they complete their online reports. So we expect some of that to start going down. So what do we do from here? You know, how do we go about expanding our program? Well, like I said, we're in a transition phase, and so we're looking at those other areas that we may not have looked at in the past as closely. One of those areas is use tax, a very volatile source of revenue. But it's an area that we feel like we've, we can establish some procedures that may identify some of those problems where we may not be receiving the use tax that we should. Another area is we'll continue to expand out on our independent audits. One of our firms just hired some new auditors for their Oklahoma office, so we, hopefully, we'll be seeing some expansion of that program as well. One of the things that we've been looking at moving into is a review of tobacco tax that we get from the state. Again, not something that we've looked at before, but we, we feel like we can just do some monitoring like we do with sales tax and just identify, just to make sure that we're getting what we should. One area that we've been working at recently with the tax commission is identifying areas that, within exemptions. We all know folks that, you know, may have a farm exemption, they go in and, you know, they claim the exemption for goods that they may not actually be using on, within their operations, where we know that goes on. And so one of the areas that we approach the tax commission about is maybe looking at enforcing, you know, exemptions, actually going out and auditing those exemptions. And it hasn't been something that the tax mission has done in the past. So this will be a program that we'll continue pushing, working with the tax mission, and hopefully, we'll see some benefits healed from that as well in the future. So that's all I have today, but I'd be happy answering questions.
All right, questions for Bob?
On your point that you made about on city borders where the zip code is the same, you might look south of 10th Street in between Check Hall and Cemetery Road. There's a guy at my church that went to a Dairy Queen there, and he did the math, and it didn't seem like it was the right rate for Oklahoma City. And I know that there's just a lot of new development that's been going on, so south of 10th Street's in Oklahoma City, north of 10th Street's UConn, but the zip code's the same on both sides, so just reporting that one to you.
We, that's actually another area that we're looking at is more outreach and education to our citizens, our residents, just to let them know, you know, if they see something like that, that they can call us, contact us through email, and we can address the problem.
Well, this person was Oklahoma City firefighter, so he, he was personally invested.
All right, Bob, thanks.
You bet.
Ken Sutil is here this morning to go over our annual debt report.
Good morning, Ken Sutil, the Finance Department. Just want to give you a few quick reminders about the debt report. This is an annual report that was, is a requirement of our debt policy that was adopted in 2015. This information's available in all the various city and trust financial reports, but hopefully, this just puts it in a nice consolidated report so that you can see the effects of that. This information is as of June 30, '16, and you'll see that we have $1.66 billion worth of debt. The largest piece of this is the GO bond debt at about $740 million. Following that, looking at kind of the long-term debt and short-term debt related to water and wastewater, it's about $550 million. So I wanted to point out, if you look at just those two uses of debt, that's about 78% of our outstanding debt. So it's basic infrastructure, it's facilities, and really, if you look at the rest of the debt, the majority of that's the same thing, you know, airport debt, Project 180, things like that. Also in the report, there's just some information on the Agreements of Support, which are sometimes called moral obligations. Those are the credits where the city has sort of cosigned with that particular trust debt. There's information on some different ratios, debt per capita, geo-debt compared to full market value, the different coverage ratios for the different revenue bonds. Those are just different indicators you can look at that kind of give a sense of the health of those credits. But really, I would point you to the biggest overall picture on that are the bond ratings, and there's a summary in here of the bond ratings. You can see that we, our ratings range from A+ at our airport to AAA with our water utility in the city, and those are very, very strong ratings. Also, there's a summary of the activity that happened in FY '16, and since the report covers activity through fiscal, the end of fiscal year '16, there's also information about what's happened so far this current fiscal year and any bond issues that are planned or maybe potential coming this year as well. So, and then lastly, there's a section at the end called Material Events. These are events that are defined under federal securities law, that if something, if these things happen, we, the city or the trusts have to disclose these events to investors. And we've separated, staff has separated these into kind of what we call routine and non-routine. So non-routine would be things like defaults or failure to pay principal or interest, things like that. Happy to report, there are none of those on there. So really, all that are listed there are the routine events. These are things like a ratings upgrade for the Water Utility Trust and bond calls. That's where we call and pay off early some of the various debts when we're doing refunding. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead. I was asked in our GO bond workshop about the impact of maybe, we talked about increasing the mill rate and the impact that might have on bond rating. I know there's many factors that go into a bond rating, but do you have an opinion on that, or is there a way to quantify that in any way as we get ready to make that decision?
Well, as you said, there's many factors. Staff, we've done some analysis on that. I know some of the options we put out there are leave it at 16. We've also provided you information on what if we raise it to 18 or to 20. It's staff's opinion that if we were to go to 20 mills, that that would put some pressure on our rating. There are various metrics that they look at, kind of the debt compared to your revenues, to your expenses, to your market values. We believe that 18, if we were to make that choice to go to 18, it would put a little bit of pressure, but we believe it would still be manageable. But we definitely felt like 20 would definitely put some pressure on some of those metrics that Moody's and Standard and Poor's look at.
All right, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
I know David Greenwell found that riveting, but in the future, we'll try not to put the revenue enforcement program and the annual debt report back to back. Also in the package is your hotel tax collections for January, oh, for December and our court of investment report for December.
All right, any citizens to be heard, send up?
No, sir.
All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.